Thanks for hanging on. About one more minute here and council will be popping on. As I'm saying, loving. And our attendees today, we got a lot of D names. That was just a cool, cool pattern of the day. Hector, I feel like you and I use work on our stand up bit.
Put on punch.
There we go. I'm gonna put that in future hybrid meeting policies to have a soundtrack.
Think we're just waiting on brighter. All right, well, let's just go ahead and get started. I'm sure she'll make it in. She might be having technical difficulties or something. So we will call the talent city council regular meeting of September 7th to order. Roll call please.
Council clerk.
Here.
Council pre number of.
Here.
Council writer is not present. Councilor Pessizo.
Here.
Councilor buyers.
Here.
Council of party Miller.
Here.
And Mayor Harris flood.
Here.
Here you have a form.
Thank you Hector. The second item on the agenda is item 2.1, which is opportunity. Well, it's a. It's item two, meeting accessibility. Hector?
This is a question for our attendees. If any of the attendees would like this meeting translated into Spanish, we'd ask for you to raise your hand now. Yes, this is an number one top by publico. See again, this is the I started on interpreter in Spanish before last summer night and I'll watch the attendees for raised hands, mayor.
Thank you. Hey, this is a small thing, but can we change item two to just 2.1? Opportunity interpret and explanation instead of breaking it down. Is there any reason why it's broken down to two different? Agenda items? Yeah, just my, it catches me every time. And. So it, I don't think it's necessary to have it up to lines. Thanks. I appreciate that. So the next item on the agenda is additions or corrections to the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Mayor, I'd like to send quick clarification and a addition of a written document to the agenda. We will have come for council tonight, the labor union contracts for approval. We just got ratification by the union today, and so I will be adding those contracts to the agenda packet after this evening. So if there is just record on file of them.
Thank you. Item number four is community announcements. Are there any community announcements staff? Hector?
Mayor, if you would indulge me, I'd like to update council on the harvest festival and its progress. And this will take a shared screen. If you can, do you see the map of talent?
Yes.
So here is a map of talent, excuse me. In the highlighted red, it's for orientation. You'll see that that is City Hall. And we plan on closing these. Closing these streets at these five locations in order to facilitate the festival on this main drag on East Main Street and Home Street. And we'll be using Market Street as overflow. So that would be Lamprey and Market, number one, number two, Talon Avenue, East Main. Number three, East Main and South Market, number four, John Street and East Main, and number five, East Main Front Street. Not only will this be helpful for the event, for the main event, but it also helps out our. Our community event, the harvest festival run. So the main idea at this point is to have the majority of the vendors along Home Street and East Main Street. Using Market Street as overflow. As vendors sign up. With some vendors in the guarding Grotto parking lot, and that will be explained further in a minute. This is the Grotto parking lot. As you can see, this will be referred to as stage one with stage with the main stage. Lettered as A, B is audience seating. And we, the Grotto is putting on a. Beer garden for us, so that'll be section C. And. Sona CBD will be hosting some additional vendors at the. Portion of the parking lot that borders Talon Avenue. Performers at this point include speed grass, a local. A local banjo and. Old timey group Mariachi, Cynthia, Adam Gabriel, a DJ. And a band named the Aqua Mistas Band from Puerto Rico that have recently set up shop in the Rogue Valley. And with additional guests on, on, on deck, just in case anyone is unable to make it on the first. This is where Town Hall is and our Commons Park. This would be referred to as stage two. With point A being the performance, performance area or the main stage that is already adjacent to City Hall. Audience seating in B, picnic area in C. And that'll be important where, when I show you where the vendors will be, or the food vendors and snacks will be. So the seat, the number C or letter C is the picnic area. The Historical Society and the library will also be hosting their own additional events. The library will be hosting a book sale. And the Historical Society will have historical documents on display. And. What's marked as F will have a small vendors that will be selling the likes of corn, ice cream, or cotton candy. And G is where we will have a children's activity, perhaps face painting and or Henna. Performers at this point include Sage Meadow, a local performer, Rogue World Music. And more are welcomed. Here we have Town Hall as it looks like from Ace East Main Street and North Market Street. And I've highlighted the alley that is in between Town Hall and Historical Society. This is where we will put the food and snack vendors. With the larger rectangles representing food trucks and the red circles representing smaller vendors that don't need as much space. The gray bordered, the circles with the gray borders would be areas where we can set up picnic tables. And in addition, there's access. As the yellow arrow indicates to go from this alley to additional seating at Commons Park. The list of vendors so far include Filipino food truck, a gentleman who sells Mexican style lotus, a lotus means corn. Sultan's Delight, a melted grilled cheese food truck, Hilltop Coffee and Garcia's Tacos. We have about three additional vendors that are on. On standby if anyone else is unable to make the event. Here is a larger view of talent. There are potentially additional events that could happen around town and I hope that counselor. Buyers and Para Miller would be able to enlighten us a little more. These comes from notes that I took over the weekend. So. Potential events could happen at Art Bob, a Camelot Theater. Malgram Garage, Gather and Truom Wines. So this would allow for the event to be citywide instead of focused solely in on the city core. In addition to the Harvest Festival, there is a harvest festival run. The 5K and 10K runs start at 8:00 AM. This is being hosted and put on by Southern Oregon runners, as you can see right under the logo. Anyone who would like to sign up for the race can sign up by visiting. The website so runners.org or by going to Facebook. And this is a screenshot from the Facebook account of the run. You can sign up by clicking the sign up button. So here is the main poster that we've used and we've created a Facebook event for it, for the event, Saturday, October 1st, 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And lastly, we invite you to come celebrate with us and for more information to contact. To contact me at harvestfestival@cityoftalent.org. So my, I think at this point, one of our. Biggest asks would be to. Really invite additional vendors to apply by visiting the city website. And downloading an application, filling it out and bringing it to City Hall or and or scanning and sending it to me at Harvest Festival at City of Town dot org.
Thank you, Hector. Are there any questions or comments? All right, Council buyers.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you for this presentation, Hector and Jordan, and. It's going to be a really great event and I'm excited to help assist however I can. And I'm looking forward to making this. A huge citywide celebration with you both.
Big shout out and thank you to to Councilor Byers and Councilor Pre Miller who have stepped up to take over the kids zone and helping get other local businesses involved. So it is going to be a super fun event. You know, Porch Fest set the bar for this year, so we're looking forward to have another home run with Harvest Festival this year.
I have a. A resident that wants to speak on the side of somebody go ahead and bring Debbie Rapaport forward and state your name and city for the record. And give her three minutes.
Yeah, I just was wondering, so there's no parade at this Harvest Festival and what about parking? Is that going to be clearly? Noted for people because that's always been an issue in downtown area. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Do you mind if I respond to that or do you want me to just follow up with Debbie? Okay, great. Great. Thank you, Debbie. Yeah, we are not doing a parade this year. Mostly just due to staff capacity and our ability to shut down that much of streets and talent. But we are planning on having organized parking. You know, we're intentionally keeping the back of City Hall and our community center in that whole area clear. To help direct folks to parking areas. So thank you. We look forward to seeing you there.
Okay. Any other announcements from staff or from council? Council writer?
Yeah, thank you. There are a few events going on. For the anniversary, Almeida anniversary this weekend and starting tomorrow. The eighth, but specific to talent. And although I don't know as much about tomorrow at the Grotto, I'm not sure if anyone else has more. Information on that. I believe they're doing some things in the evening there tomorrow, but on Saturday. There is a resource fair and there will be extra entertainment and community activities at the Town Hall parking lot. From 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And there are other activities scheduled throughout the weekend and and starting Thursday, like I said, that are. Being organized by the Long Term Recovery Group. So there is a website, which is JCC. LTRG.org backslash commemorative commemoration event. That has a full schedule. There's some things in Phoenix and but for talent will be in the Town Hall parking lot on Saturday from 10 to 2.
Tomorrow night's event is between six and eight at the Grotto. And there'll be. It looks like music and entertainment and. And also. Commemoration. Right? Any other announcements? Okay, the next item on the agenda is item number five, speakers for a non-agenda item. And at this point, I'm going to hand the gavel to Council President M. Panamera, because I am going to. Take a step down as mayor and and step up as a speaker heard on non agenda item.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you, mayor. So I think the first thing I ask for is people have signed up to speak and. If there's not a lot, we'll give everybody their, I forget if it's five or three minutes. Three, okay. Is there anybody, oh, five? Four, no, okay. All right. So Hector, is there anybody signed up to speak on on agenda items?
Council President, we have one person who have signed up as a five o'clock and would like to welcome Darby Harris flood the Talent Business Alliance President.
All right. Welcome, Darby.
Thank you. So. I am going to put my Talent Business Alliance hat on so that I'm not confused as the mayor. So as you know, one of talent business, let's see. So I'm here to speak on behalf of the Talent Business Alliance. And I'm here to thank tireless volunteer counselor on a buyers. As you all know, one of TBA's current efforts is to help rebuild customer base as a top priority. For business, for businesses that were impacted by the Almeida fire in the midst of the COVID crisis. The program is to boost talent events and to amplify them with robust advertising. Using the boost and amplify grant funds, a fund that the city of talent has contributed to. Karen recently experienced the first play music on the porch day. On August 27th, the TBA, as the major sponsor. Using boost and amplify funding for marketing, talent had a blowout event. In speaking with the downtown businesses, we heard comments like we were not expecting that kind of turnout. Another business said, we sold out of certain menu items. Another business said, we just had to stop taking food orders. And one retailer said it was all new faces. By all accounts, the event was a smashing success that exposed our local businesses to reported record sales. And new foot traffic. This event would not have been so successful. Were it not for the masterful organization and leadership of Counselor Anna Byers. Volunteers like her make talent stronger. Please join Talent Business Alliance on behalf of local businesses. In expressing our sincere gratitude for this excellent event for towns ongoing recovery efforts. Thank you so much, Anna. It was a terrific event and and really everybody is just so grateful.
My pleasure.
Thank you, Darby. And I think we all echo those sentiments. Mayor, would you like to take the gavel back for the rest of the?
Sure. I don't know, I kind of like it over here. Thank you. Thank you guys for indulging in a little light phone and a much deserved. Thank gratitude. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is commission member appointments, 6.1 appointment of member to the Talent Planning Commission. Staff?
Yes, thank you, mayor. We currently have one vacancy on our planning commission. And the mayor who have talked with Joy Riley and the planning commission did interview Joy Riley, and they have recommended her appointment to the planning commission. Joy has lived here for 30 years and has been very involved in city business and she is here in the audience tonight.
Great, thank you. So I attended the meeting where they interviewed two candidates, two great candidates. And it was a tough choice, but Joy Riley came to us with a great deal of experience and she's a, she's a, she was a known entity to many, many. Commissioners and. So it was a unanimous recommendation. It looks like Joy has her hand up, so we're going to go ahead and bring her forward and let her speak on this item.
Fair part of me, it looks like Joy is using an old version of Zoom. I'm going to promote Joy to panelists for the time.
Hi, Joy, if you can state your name and city for the record, please. Oh, you're muted.
I'm Joy Riley. I live in the city of talent and I appreciate this opportunity to serve talent. Again, and. I'm assuming you're. You act like you are going to appoint me, but the reason I raised my hand is because I wanted to let the staff know that I'm not gonna make it to the first meeting. Great start, I know, but we're going to Scotland and I just can't stay home, so. I'll see you in October if you appoint me.
Thank you, Joy. Okay, yes, so after, after an extensive interview process, we got a unanimous recommendation from the planning commission. So with that, I would ask for an consent to appoint Joy Riley to the planning commission. Counselor Panamera?
Yes, I moved to affirm the mayor's appointment of Joy Riley to, as a commissioner. Of the City of Talent Planning Commission for a four-year term beginning September 7th, 2022.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion and a second. Forgive me, Council buyers. It was a bit of a horse race. I think I saw both of those hands go up just about at the same time, so. So we have a motion and a second to affirm the mayor's appointment of Joy Riley as commissioner. Of the City of Talent Planning Commission for a four-year term beginning September 7th, 2022. Is there any further discussion? Council Panamera, do you wish to speak to your motion?
Yeah, I just wanted to say I've had the opportunity to serve with Joy in several capacities. And I just wanted to say I'm just thrilled to have somebody with her depth of knowledge. And intelligence and and most of all, just passion for for public service. It's infectious and thank you, Joy, for stepping up.
Anyone else? All right, roll call, please.
Council clerk.
Yes.
Council pre number of.
Yes.
Council writer.
Yes.
Council Pessizo.
Yes.
Councilor buyers.
Yes.
Council of Para Miller.
Yes.
Well, she carries mayor.
Thank you, Hector, and welcome, welcome aboard again, Commissioner Riley. We'll see you in October. Thank you for your service. Item seven, 7.1, a city manager's report. Stop?
Yeah, I think mayor. So my full report. Is in the agenda packet, so I welcome any comments or questions on that report. I do want to make one correction here. In my report, I shared that the Jackson County Community's Long Term Recovery Group is organizing a tour of the bioswales. They're organizing that tour for their sustainability board and they are producing an article to share in their newsletter for fire survivors. So I wanted to offer that clarification before we dive in. Yeah, any questions or comments?
Are we diving in?
If we want to dive in.
Yeah. Oh, okay. If we want to dive in. Okay, I thought you said before we dive in. I. Any questions or comments on the city manager's report? Okay. Seeing none, let's go ahead and move on to item 8.1, which is ordinance 2022-975. Dash of vacating a public utility, utility easement. ordinance 2022-975- vacating a public utility easement.
Are you ready for staff report?
Yes.
I'm going to hand it off to Kristen May as our planning director.
Good evening, Council and everybody attending. So this is an existing public utility easement located at 299 Gangness on parcel 381W26AB, lot 1012 and a portion of 1027, I believe. So the proposed vacation was formally, this, this proposed vacation will formally extinguish the the public utilities easement that was originally established for storm drain for the, our storm drain easement. In February, the property, these properties underwent a property line adjustments. And it was discovered during these property line adjustments that the public utilities easement was actually in the wrong location. The original easement that you see in light blue is the original PUE and the storm drain is not located in that easement. The storm drain is actually located where it is being re-described and in the green sewer drainage easement. So that's the real purpose of the vacation of this easement and it also will not be running under a dwelling unit as well. So it makes sense to vacate that public utilities easement and re-establish it where the storm drain is. And the ordinance actually goes into the new description and adopts the new easement as well as vacating the original easement. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Looks like we don't have any questions. Thank you, Kristen.
Very good. So I would ask that there, a proposed motion, I don't know if we have that ready for you to approve the ordinance 2022-975-0.
Great. Jordan?
Yes, just a quick note process. We do want to open up that public hearing before Council considers that ordinance. Because I know we have some audience numbers today on the topic.
Great. Yep, I'm, I'm there. So at this time, if there's no questions or comments, we'll open up the public hearing. Are there any? Any sign up forms? All right. So we'll go ahead and close the public hearing.
Just, excuse me, Mayor, there was one couple that did come in, they live in that neighborhood and were interested in the easement and were satisfied with what was happening, just so. Council notes there was some interest.
Okay, so I'm going to reopen the public hearing. And I do see somebody in the audience who also has their hand up. So is the attending, is the interested parties attending? Kristen?
Um, let me see.
I understand we don't have any speaker request forms unless I misunderstood.
I do not see them.
All right, with that, then we'll go ahead and call Derek Volkart forward. Please state your name and city for the record.
Hey, thank you, Derek Volkart. Just a bit outside the city of talent and the Jackson County. Hey, I just, I have neither satisfaction nor dissatisfaction from the proposal. But I just wanted to note that the proposed vacation is, is not part of the vacation list on the city website. And I, I just want to mention that I could be on an island, but some of us rely on the city website to to inform ourselves of, of the projects going on and and that one isn't listed there, but it was obviously listed in the packet, and so that's helpful and that's all. So have a great night. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Are there? Just going to double check to make sure nobody else is in the audience that wants to speak on this item. No? Okay. I don't see anybody else, so I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. And if there's no comments or questions, I'll entertain the motion.
Mayor, I'll go ahead and make a quick oral staff report here. This is the first reading of this ordinance tonight. And so the council has the option of, we could go ahead and do a vote tonight to go ahead and see if we can pass it with one reading. Or just go ahead and do the title only reading tonight and then have it come on our next agenda.
So I guess what I'm asked, what I would ask is what can either of these actions be done with the, the potential motion that's in the packet on page eight?
Yes, option two.
So if we choose option two, the motion is in the packet on page eight. And if they choose option one, can be read by title only. It's the same motion?
Pretty much, if we do the motion tonight and it's not unanimous, this will come before council again next week as, as next meeting as a second reading.
All right, so for the council, either option uses the same motion that's on page eight. Counsel Panamarev?
Well, my understanding is if we go for getting it all done in one night, we have to read through the warehouses and everything, right?
Right.
Yeah, and is there, is there, is staff in a hurry for this? I'd, I'd rather not do that unless there's a benefit to staff.
No hurry.
No hurry? Okay, then, then my, I'd just, just as soon do it in two meetings if it's all the same to you, Kristen. Much as I love to hear us read. Mayor, would you like to enter, is it okay if I make the motion? Whoops, that's not the motion. I, I, that's not the potential motion, I'll have to find it. Okay. Okay, I think I found it. I move to approve ordinance 2022-975-0 vacating a 10-foot wide PUE located at 229 Gangness Assessor's Parcel 381W26AB, Lot 1012 and a portion of 330 Gangness, Lot 1018.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 2022-975-0 vacating a 10-foot wide PUE located at 229 Gangness Assessor's Parcel 381W26AB, Lot 1012 and a portion of 330 Gangness, Lot 1018. Are there, is there any further discussion?
If I may, I'll, I'll just say I wanted to thank Kristen for a very clear report. That's why I didn't have any questions. Well done.
All right, hearing none. I will ask for a roll call, please.
Council Clerk.
Yes.
Counsel Panamarev.
Yes.
Counsel Grider.
Yeah.
Counsel Pesto.
Yes.
Counselor Byers.
Yes.
Counselor Para Miller.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you. Hey, I just have a quick question. It's, it's really not germane to the decision, but are these both, are these lots both under current construction right now?
The one with the easement on it is not under construction. They're waiting for this easement to be vacated.
Okay. All right. The next item on the agenda is sorry, I the next item on the agenda is item number nine, the consent calendar. Has everybody had a chance to review the items in the consent calendar? First question is, does anybody want to take anything out of the consent calendar for discussion? All right. So if everybody's reviewed the consent calendar, I'll entertain a motion. Counsel Perry Miller.
I move to approve the consent calendar.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counsel Clerk.
Yes.
Counselor Panamarev.
Yes.
Counsel Grider.
Yeah.
Counsel Pesto.
Yes.
Counselor Byers.
Yes.
Counselor Para Miller.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is 10.1. Consideration of Labor Agreements Between the City of Talent and Teamsters Local 223. Staff?
Yes, so the city has reached ten agreement with the union and the union did ratify that agreement today. So the contracts are now before council. We did have a chance to overlook the contract, but for the folks in the audience so that you all know kind of the bulk of the contract, it can be a 6% cost of living adjustment for both of our bargaining units, as well as a one-time lump sum bonus and some increase to our HRA VIBA, our health reimbursement account. And then June, some, some house cleaning in terms of changing of dates and timing as well as getting some incentives to attract some more lateral police officers to come over and, and be a part of the talent team. So I'm asking council tonight if you are ready for it to go ahead and approve each contract separately. And we will be offering the mayor to execute those contracts.
I have a question. One of the items in the general contract is adding a provision of additional $100 a month for somebody with a CDL. That's a great plan. It sounds like it'll incentivize our ability to hire somebody with a CDL and improve our street sweeping services. I would ask staff to, to publicize a street cleaning schedule on, on the website and then provide us with information on when, on those days when, when those services couldn't be provided. So, so in other words, what, what would be a normal street sweeping schedule and what area of town, what can people expect? And if for some reason that service was not able to be provided for that to be disclosed on the, on the calendar as well, is that, is that something we can do?
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that a lot. All right, are there any other questions or comments? I, I just want to make one more comment, and that is, thank you, Jordan. I know that negotiating contracts is a heavy lift and we really appreciate your first year in service with us, taking this on and doing such an excellent job. And as we move towards approval of this, I also want to thank the council for being, for your generosity as employers, both for our general unit and our police department. We have unfailingly in the past provided for, provided for our contracts. And, and I just think that once in a while, it's important to recognize this council for being great employers. Are there any other comments? All right, I'll entertain the motion. Counsel, oh, Counsel Clerk?
I move to approve the negotiated contract between the City of Talent and Teamsters Local 223 for the city's general unit as provided in the council packet for the period of July 1st 2022 through June 30th, 2023, and authorize the mayor to execute the contract.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the negotiated contract between the City of Talent and the Teamsters Local 223 for the city for the city's general unit as provided in the council packet for the period of July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023 and authorize the mayor to execute the contract. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counsel Clerk.
Yes.
Counsel Panamarev.
Yes.
Counsel Grider.
Yeah.
Counsel Pesto.
Yes.
Counsel Byers.
Yes.
Counsel Para Miller.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you, Hector. Anybody want to make a motion on the police contract? Counsel, Counsel Pesto? There was another horse race, but I got to Pesto first.
See, I moved to approve the negotiated contract between the City of Talent and Teamsters Local 223 for the city's police unit as provided in the council packet for the period of July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023, and authorize the mayor to execute the contract.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the negotiated contract between the City of Talent and Teamsters Local 223 for the city's police unit as provided in the council packet for the period of July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023, and authorize the mayor to execute the contract. Any further discussion? I, I do have one point I'd like to make. If I were, if I were voting on this contract, I would certainly support it. I think it's really important for it to be said on the record that in this contract in particular, there were some really innovative solutions. We face very difficult times in hiring. We have for quite some time now. And I really appreciate the work that you, Jordan, and Chief Snook did to really be creative and come up with attractive employment packages that, that will provide us with not just longevity incentive.
Stop it. Stop.
I think that's Kristen's dog. And you know what? That set my dog off. That's funny. My dog's barking in the other room. Yeah, just, it's just a really creative and generous package and, and I just I just think it needs to be pointed out. You guys did a terrific job on this. And would you please thank Chief Snook? Any further comments? All right, roll call, please.
Counsel Clerk.
Yes.
Counsel Panamarev.
Yes.
Counsel Grider.
Yeah.
Counselor Pesto.
Yes.
Counselor Byers.
Yes.
Counsel Para Miller.
Yeah.
Motion carries, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Hector. Item number 11.1 is consideration of letter of agreement for participation with the Fire Recovery Regional Plan. Staff report?
Yes, so the Jackson County Community Long Term Recovery Group is leading the effort to create a regional long-term recovery plan. The idea of that plan is a shared vision across impacted communities from the Alameda fire as well as the Open Chain Fire that names, you know, what our collective vision is, how we're going to work towards that vision and some projects to help implement it. So they are beginning that planning process for creating that plan, and they have asked City of Talent to sign on as one of the participating jurisdictions. Signing on to the letter of agreement they put before us, it's in the council packet. You know, they're asking that we act as a member of the steering committee for this project, that we contribute cash and or in-kind resources to the project and to share information that we have on hand that can help inform the creation of the plan. And I will say tonight we have their executive director, Karen Wheeler Clay, here to answer any questions that the council may have about this project or the potential of talent's involvement.
Any questions? I would invite Executive Director Wheeler Clay if she wants to make any comments.
Yeah, so the, a lot of this is spelled out specifically in the letter of agreement. We've gotten some further clarification that the steering committee will Um, yeah, so the, a lot of this is spelled out specifically in the letter of agreement. We've gotten some further clarification that the steering committee will meet um, about once a month. Um, and the estimated time commitment is one to two hours and really serving as that sort of technical expertise. Um, through this process, um, keeping the process informed of all of the moving pieces. As we know, there's been a lot of planning activity to date. And so we want to make sure that we are accounting for that appropriately. Um, and then as we are engaging um, community in feedback on visioning and, and what they want to see prioritized. We're able to dovetail that with some of the already um, in-process plans and then looking at some other opportunities. That may come forward. So this step now is just about sort of blessing the process. Um, projects will come before you at a later date. And that will be more of a policy document than a planning document.
Yeah, you know, I did, I did have kind of one clarifying question that. Um, and so as, as you guys develop your policy documents, you, you bring them to the individual cities and propose them for adoption?
So the plan will be developed in partnership with all of the municipalities and the county. Um, and so no project, right, and, and actionable projects under this have a defined project lead and. Um, a budget outline. And so no project would make it into the plan without you guys first saying, this is something we want to do. So that would come before you in advance of this and that would be something that Jordan and other steering committee members could help. Prepare that for you guys.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I, I, I realize I, I just wasn't clear about my question. So the policies will come before each jurisdiction individually. And each jurisdiction will, will be adopting the same policies?
So, so it's, it's more of a, there was some concern around this being possibly um. In conflict with existing comprehensive plans that cities have. Um, and so our consultants have really framed this more as a policy adoption. As opposed to a, a comprehensive planning modification. Um, and so that would come to you guys for review and adoption. Um, and it would be like, you know, projects fourteen, sixteen, and twenty-seven, City of Talent is interested in participating in. So when you adopt the full plan. You would only be signing off on the projects you had already stated you wanted to take point on.
On that, okay. Um, Counselor Breiter?
Yeah, thanks. Um. So was I understanding correctly from the information in the packet that we read through, there. Would be representatives from the council that would attend those meetings?
So that is um, a decision that you all will make with Jordan, right? Who would be the point person for City of Talent in that space? And that can either be an elected or it can be a staff person and that's something that you guys would determine.
And how many? Were, were you wanting just one from each jurisdiction?
Essentially one and then uh, um, possibly a proxy in case that person can't make that meeting.
Counselor Panemir.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Karen. I, I attended the, the kickoff meeting. I think that was last week. Um, and uh, it was, it was really, I, I really appreciate, first of all, the work you all have done. Uh, meeting and met needs um, thus far, but also the idea of, of creating a kind of a regional vision. Um, I, you know, the idea I got from the consultant is I think he used the word blueprint in, in terms of talking about the policies. So um, the, what I, what I uh, surmised from that was that these policies wouldn't necessarily be binding on. Cities, but more aspirational and, and kind of coordination and, and this is, this is what we, what we want to do. Yeah.
I'm just trying to wrap my mind around the idea about uh, all, all of us adopt each jurisdiction, adopting the same, uh, the same document. I'm sure it. It's just my linear thinking. I'm sure that uh, it's. Um, I, it's doable. I'm just. Yeah, curious about that.
Yes. And so, so in my, you know, in my past, we've um, I've, I've worked on a lot of the community health assessment and improvement planning process, right? And so with that, the county blessed it and Board of Commissioners adopted it. Um, but it was also adopted by the hospitals and federally qualified health centers and the coordinated care organizations and other partners. Saying these are priorities. We um, agree are important and we want to focus and we agree to report on progress towards these, these. Goals, right? And in that case, it was like resilience for families and children, behavioral health and housing. Right? And so in this case, it would be more of that sort of like high level adoption. And then again, those sort of identified projects within the plan that you guys had already um. Determined you wanted to be part of.
Can you remind me um, what community-based organizations are going to be part of the steering committee?
So we are gathering firm commitments on that right now. Um, but we've had conversations with everyone from Access to Rogue Action Center to um. So Ready and So Healthy and um, Coalition Fortaleza and Rogue Food Unites and. United Way. And so it's, it's, it's a lot of partners that have been engaged on this process and we are starting the signature process now. Um, after our lunch meeting last week.
Right. Right. Thank you for uh, being here and, and entertaining our questions. Um, I, I too attended your um, the, the, the kickoff meeting and it was really great. Are there any other questions or comments? Uh, Jordan?
I'll say that just make one, you know, if council decides to move in a direction to sign on to this letter of agreement. Um, one, more than open if anyone would like to volunteer to be on that steering committee, I would love to have a council voice present. Um, but two, a portion of the letter of agreement, if we sign on to it, is to contribute um, to the process in some way. You know, and my recommendation, idea after talking with Karen is to provide in-kind rent. To the, the group that is running this um. Planning process. At the upstairs of the depot station, which is currently vacant. So I just wanted to let you know that that was part of the staff recommendation that came through staff report and open for discussion as well. Um, if we decide to sign on.
I'm glad you brought that up because I did have a question about that. Did we, did we assess the value of that and why we chose twelve months? Is that, is there like a, like a, is there a target we're hitting for, for in-kind value or anything like that?
There's not a target that we're hitting for that. You know, I calculated it based off of square footage and what we're charging the other tenant in the downstairs space per square foot. Um, I said up to one year, but once again, that is just a, a number I threw out there just to help provide stability. I do think the project itself is a six-month project. Um, so that is up for discussion as well with you all.
Do you know what the assessed value is?
Of the depot building itself?
No, of the, uh, I'm sorry, not, you know, not, not, what, what a value, what value, how did you evaluate? Not how, but what was the value of the rental?
Yeah, the about, um, I think the number was nine hundred and forty-eight per month. And I will pull up the agenda packet to give you the exact number.
Um, I honestly, you know, I, I think uh, this is a great. Uh, a great way to uh, provide for this effort. Um, and I have no heartburn with it. I just want the amount stated for the record. Um, in the meantime, I will take Counsel Breiter's questions and then Counsel Byers.
I had a question about the first thing you mentioned, Jordan. Um, with a representative. With that, is that a separate conversation to have um, just about your capacity and or who has that capacity? Or at what point would we want to? Decide on that?
I see this as an appointment. Oh, I'm sorry, Jordan.
I was going to say the same thing, that I do see this as an appointment by council because this is a, a regional group effort across jurisdictions.
I apologize, uh, Jordan. Yep.
Um, and just sorry, but for the record, um, you know, I would charge a value of a nine hundred and forty-two dollars and thirty-four cents per month. Through the rental of that upstairs space.
Um, Counsel Byers?
Are we including the in-kind donation of utilities for that space as well, since it can be hard to calculate with one meter for the whole building?
So the, the way the lease is with the current tenant who's in the downstairs portion. Is that if we put an upstairs tenant um, to the depot building, the downstairs tenant would pay eighty-five percent of utilities and the upstairs tenant would pay fifteen percent of the utilities. Um, the only utility that the city itself provides is water. Um, electric, which is the only other utility provided to that building would be a separate. Um, entity.
There are no sewer services?
Oh, I'm for the trash. I apologize. That is usually, there is trash pickup um, and sewer services for that building as well.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Um. So with this motion, we're going to be agreeing to a twelve-month in-kind don- donation. Is that right?
You know, first I would have counsel make a motion to sign on to the letter of agreement. And then if counsel is, is ready to do a donation of space or wants to move forward with that. Um, there's a draft motion. Oh, I'm not sharing my screen. Sorry, oh, that's why. There's a draft motion um, that you are more than welcome to amend as council sees fit for. Providing contributions to the process.
Yeah, I was going to say, I was going to uh, ask the council to entertain a, a motion that put it in your purview. Um, to adjust the amount of time based on need, but up to a year does that. So. So there's really no um, reason for that. Okay. Um. All right, so uh, without any further questions, I would go ahead and entertain a motion. Counsel Panemir.
Yeah, and I, I do see this as two separate motions. So if, if that's okay, I'll make two separate motions. Um, I move to participate in the regional long-term recovery plan process and authorize the city manager to execute the letter of agreement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to participate in the regional long-term recovery plan process and authorize the city manager to execute the letter of agreement. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Counselor Clark.
Yes.
Counselor Panemir.
Yes.
Counselor Greider.
Yes.
Counselor Pesezo.
Yes.
Counselor Byers.
Yes.
Counselor Para Miller.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you, Hector. Okay, second motion. Anybody? Counsel Panemir.
I move to provide in-kind rent at the upstairs portion of the depot station. To the Jackson County Community Long-Term Recovery Group for up to one year for the purpose of contributing to the regional long-term recovery plan.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to provide in-kind rent at the upstairs portion of the depot station to the Jackson County. Community Long-Term Recovery Group for up to one year for the purpose of contributing to the regional long-term recovery plan. Any further discussion on that? Roll call please.
Counselor Clark.
Yes.
Counselor Panemir.
Yes.
Counselor Greider.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Counselor Greder.
Yes.
Counselor Pesezo.
Yes.
Counselor Byers.
Yes.
Counselor Para Miller.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you, Hector. Uh, hey, this is a neat solution. Um, and we are going to be excited to have you in our town, Karen.
We are very excited to have a home base now. So thank you so much.
A really neat office up there. Um, okay. Uh, thanks, everybody. Uh, the next item on the agenda is eleven point two, consideration of hybrid meeting policy. Staff?
Yeah, so this agenda item actually came out of last meeting where we had one of our first um. Semi-hybrid meetings with a virtual or in-person you-in-space as well as existing virtually. And recognizing the need to have some hybrid city policies um, for future hybrid meetings. So the, the draft hybrid meeting policies for you all in the agenda packet, really they outline the very basics of meetings. So um, was the expectation on mayor and council, whether online or in person, if we're having hybrid. The expectation on staff and then how public can interact. Um, it also outlines the procedures for taking comments. You know, first we'll look to folks who are in person in the room and then we'll look for folks um. Who are in the virtual audience just to help provide some order. Um, it describes how we will execute executive sessions. And then for the interactive features of Zoom, when we could use them. Um, and when not. And I will say it's largely a do not use the interactive features unless you're intentionally having an online meeting. Um, just to help with public records keeping. And help keep heteronizing during meetings as well. Um, so up here, what I love to discuss with council is one, those policies, if you think anything is missing, if you think anything needs changing of the like. And then to also discuss timing from city council of when would council like to return to in-person sessions. Um, and I can share a little more information on that. After we discuss the policies.
Um, I would recommend an amendment to uh, number one, to say the mayor and the council will participate in in-person hybrid. Uh, and I would actually just change are expected to, to wills. Or shalls. Uh, so I see one in two and I'll just uh, leave it to you to make those uh, those changes where else they are found.
Great.
And shall is actually probably more uh, commonly found, but I'll let you choose will or shall. Um. Counsel Panemir.
Yeah, I was going to say I really liked uh, these as written. I kind of liked the expected to actually, but I was going to ask the question. About um. You know, if, if, you know, we have had situations even before COVID where people were traveling. And um, uh, if they were able to make the meetings by uh, participating by phone. So I'm, I'm, I was going to ask the question about the are expected to. I kind of liked that language when, you know, you'd, you'd expect people to show up. Um, but in certain extenuating circumstances, um, it might be helpful to uh. Have that um, ability to participate long distance. Um, if people have to travel for work, say. So um. Other than that, I was going to say I didn't see anything missing. Um, I thought it was pretty thoughtful. So maybe that's, that's worth a bit of a discussion that the wording. Uh, could be such that it, it at least allows um. Maybe, maybe a presiding officer discretion um, or a council discretion. Uh, people to participate um. Electronically if, if they can't be there or, or potentially uh, for health concerns.
I would say uh, I'd like to see that as uh. You know, unless, unless otherwise arranged or something along those lines because I. I can see where that might interfere with getting the quorum, for example. Um, I, I remember uh, one counselor did quite a bit of traveling as part of her job and she often. Um, and, and we have a counselor now that occasionally pulls over. Uh, on his uh. On his field work and, and takes a meeting from the field. So. Well, yeah, I do see that point and I missed it. Although I don't like the are expected to, which I'm just going to say, but we'll leave that to the council till then. Um, I actually, I need to step away for a moment. Um, so Counsel Panemir, if I'm going to give you the gavel.
Sure, and, and actually we. If anybody else, does anybody else need a few minutes break? Okay, um, then let's just go ahead and continue the discussion. Um. I, I think we're looking for some wording between shall and are expected to. Um. I don't know if you have any suggestions, Jordan, or if anybody has any other thoughts that'd like to bring up. On the hybrid meeting policies. Counselor Greider.
So just to confirm, it. Would be or, or could be acceptable if someone did have to, a counselor had to join. Via Zoom, is that what we would do and they would still be, they would still count as, I mean, everything would. Count as them being present, um, but would be. Um, approved prior.
Yeah, I thi- I think where the mayor was essentially uh, coming from in the beginning is we didn't want everybody to just like sit at home and not come in for the meetings. But. But in the years before COVID, when people travel or or for other reasons, we were fine with letting them call in. I think the only the only difficulties I personally experienced or saw other people experience and and Counselor Clark will correct my memory is that there were times when people who were calling in couldn't hear other people because we just weren't disciplined about using our microphones and all of that. But if somebody is participating from afar and can hear everything and can speak, I think that that tends to work okay. Counselor Byers.
Yeah, in in general, I'm supportive of this. However, I I am thinking of specific instances which I know I will experience in the next few months where for the health of a family member who I'm supporting, it may or may not be better for me to not attend depending on so many other factors that are unforeseeable right now. So I'm wondering if there is a potential to include language in there that I guess sticking with is expected to as opposed to shall implies that to the best of one's ability given the wider state of affairs.
Next, I think is, oh, Counselor Clark, you haven't spoken on this yet. Go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna suggest language like shall accept in extenua- extenuating circumstances with acknowledgement or coordination, I'm coming trouble coming up with the word with the city manager. Something to that effect. I'll think about it exactly, but I think you guys know what I mean.
Okay. Thanks for that contribution. Counselor Greider.
Yeah, thanks. I'm glad that Counselor Clark chimed in before me because I do unfortunately have the same issue as Counselor Byers with caring for family members. So but I also want to meet expectations of being present and so I I am just really interested in in that language and and how, what the process would be to have that approved if it was needed, but also not wanting to take advantage of that and and still want to be there as often as possible. So I didn't have a recommendation for the language, so I appreciate that and just interested in seeing what that process would be to have that come.
Thank you, Counselor Greider. I think you do a really good job of clarifying the intent. Counsel, sorry, Jordan.
Um, I would ask counsel, you know, hearing all this feedback, rather than go ahead and trying to wordsmith in tonight's meeting, if you all don't mind if I take these policies back, workshop them, and then bring them back forward to you all next meeting. I also would love the opportunity to talk a bit with Hector about how we could make that work to have both a hybrid in person. You know, one of our wants for having everyone either in person or everyone either virtual is just easier on the technological side. So I'd love to just work out those kinks and then come back to you all with a new draft. Refined in that category.
Thank you, Jordan. I I think that's an excellent suggestion. It's always a mistake to try to wordsmith in in meetings if we can avoid it. I thank you for being pretty clear on the attention. I just, just a little extra advice is some of us do attend hybrid meetings. I do at RVMPO, so you can hear from us what you know, what the experience is. And I and I think you nailed it. It's it's having the technology work so that communication is great. Anybody? Oh, thank you. You're back, Mayor. I think what we Can you hear? Okay. So we got to the point where Jordan's asking to take this back to wordsmith a bit. But I think Jordan also wanted to talk about the when. And I'll hand you back the gavel.
I'll go ahead and provide some context too. Maybe I might jump in. So we've recently been able to reset up town hall so that all the microphones and all the equipment is now working again to host in person meetings. So town hall is ready for in person. To be able to move very professionally towards hybrid meetings, you know, is going to require an investment by the city and some additional equipment that'll be roughly around twelve to fifteen thousand dollars. But the biggest thing about that is that there is a supply chain issue. So we likely, if we put an order in this month, we likely won't get the equipment piece until February, January, February. And this piece of equipment is what most other jurisdictions are using to help just have people's faces be visible when they're in person. It's just the way that the camera moves to make sure they can see and recognize people. So recognizing that, you know, from October to February will be a time where we would have to figure out a way to kind of jury rig having hybrid meetings or having entirely in person meetings and removing that hybrid element would be the options for kind of the next four month horizon. So that's the the context of where we are in terms of technology for hybrid meetings. And I'll turn the microphone back to all of you to discuss, you know, the preference of council.
Yeah, I just two clarifications. So I think so you think you're saying we wouldn't be able to do hybrid well for the next four months. And I think we've also heard from folks who have, you know, very good reasons for not wanting to be in person. So I think that kind of decides I wouldn't want to force anybody to attend in person to put any family member at risk or anything like that. The other thing I was thinking about, you know, the cost, the investment, it's not a lot of money, but I I think that also it's a really good, a well-run, good technology in our meetings is something that will benefit our community at large. I'm I'm taking that on faith, and is that is that valid?
We have found that we've had an increase in attendance to city council meetings through the use of Zoom.
Thanks.
Is it Counselor Byers and then Counselor Greider?
Thank you. I'm I'm also curious. I I know that our offer for translation is not always taken advantage of, but I'm wondering how that offer of translation will continue in in person meetings. And I I know it's absolutely possible, so I'm just curious to learn more about what the plan is.
Yeah, I'm happy to speak to that. So right now, we're we're only able to provide translation to city council meetings through this online platform. You know, I will say it is a very rarely, and I would like to Hector to see if it has been used prior, but since my term here at the city, we've actually not had any requests for translation during our city council meetings. So Hector, before I pass it to you, you know, a consideration that I would recommend to council is instead of having translation at city council meetings, to start having regular either monthly or every other month Spanish-only meetings where we can just have more town hall style with our Spanish-speaking residents where we summarize what's going on in city business and talk about things that way. But Hector, do you have record of how many times our translation services have been used?
Since, well, in twenty twenty, there have not been any requests, but if everyone remembers when we were looking at perhaps using Chuck Roberts Park for FEMA housing, that's when we had several requests come in at at one time. And then since then, there have been none, although we do notify our residents that it is available.
Counselor Greider.
I, yeah, I so I don't ask this to, I only ask this to clarify not to, not to persuade one way or the other, but was it an option then, was it on the table then to wait to do in person until February when those when that technology was in place? Was that one of the things you mentioned? Okay, sorry, I think I missed. And then also just wanted to, I just really appreciate that all the work that Jordan and Hector have to do in in setting those meetings up then. And so not wanting to put more on your plate with that to bring in counselors electronically. So I I appreciate that that's, I I I'm, I guess my intention in bringing that, like, you know, asking about that originally was that it would be using the same technology that it would be using to bring in community members, but I could be wrong. I don't want to add an extra thing for you. I just want to acknowledge that that's a lot of extra work.
Counselor Greider, was there a question in that one? Did you want me to explain a little more?
I guess, yeah, I mean, I guess that is a question, or had you, because I, the way that it was worded was that we were, you know, that it was expected that council would be there. So is this new to you now to try to rework things that we would be able to zoom in? And does that seem a lot to ask? Yeah, curious how that'll be for you to set up.
Yeah, so in in terms of having some counselors present in person versus some counselors virtual, that's the thing that I'm gonna want to connect with Hector with to better understand how we could make that work. Yeah, so my best is I don't have that answer yet, but I will definitely research, particularly as we start looking into some potential wording for these hybrid meeting policies to bring back to you all as a council likely next next council meeting.
Sorry, Mayor, you were muted there.
Counselor Clark.
Yeah. Yeah, I feel some kind of some internal conflict about this because I know that some people feel excluded by the Zoom. And I recognize that we are seeing more and on average, more attendees now than before the pandemic, but it could just be because city council business has gotten more interesting. Correlation is not necessarily causation we have to keep in mind. So, yeah, I mean, I guess I'm having a hard time coming up with feeling strongly one way or the other, but I I have heard those comments of people that say that we need to get back in person and that, you know, not everyone wants to engage via Zoom. And I just want to acknowledge that while I continue to ruminate about it.
You're muted, Mayor, but I can read your lips. I, in a similar vein, I'd like to acknowledge that's something I'm weighing in in my own consideration and it is not it is just me sharing thought process. I am wondering if a separate town hall situation held only in Spanish is something that is more separating than bringing together. I I don't know the answer to that. It's a question that I have. I'm also wondering if it might create a more targetable opportunity for people attending for any reason. Again, I don't know the answer to that, but that is something I am thinking about. And I also want to acknowledge I've heard the same things that Counselor Clark has said about some community members feeling excluded because we have been so dependent on Zoom, understandably, for the last couple of years. And simultaneously, I also acknowledge the feedback that for some people, it has made attending much more accessible, not just because of for all the reasons, whether they're worried about their health or childcare is hard to get, or they can't make it, or whatever it may be. So I think there's a lot a lot to weigh in all of these considerations. However much we might want to jump back to gathering in person, everything's better in person. I completely understand that for all the reasons. Yeah.
Can you read my lips, Jordan?
I'm trying. I'm really trying. No, again. I want to say thank you for all for all the input tonight. You know, I'd like to recommend to council is kind of the best next steps is you know, keep thinking about about returning and and what that might look like for council as we enter into more of a hybrid zone. I'm gonna take a step back with staff over the next few weeks and just lay out some very clear options that help show what's possible, what we can do around translation, et cetera. And so I'm happy to bring back this conversation to council with some more kind of clear options that we can discuss and more knowledge on the table.
Counselor Clark.
Yeah, I just wanted to say when we do get to the point of being able to do hybrid meetings and do them well, we're, that is a definite improvement from the pre-pandemic state, and that's going to be great for people who want to attend in person to be able to attend in person and for people who wanna turn on Zoom and, you know, cook their dinner and feed their kids or whatever. So that's that will be great when we get there, and I appreciate the work that's going into making that happen.
Anything else? All right. Thank you, everybody. So do you need a motion to postpone this item? I don't think so. Right, okay. All right, so thanks, everybody, for the great input. Let's go ahead and move on to the next item. Unless anybody wants to do, unless anybody else wants to raise a motion. No, all right. The next item on the agenda is sorry. But if I want to read anything interesting, I have to leave my agenda and then I have to come back to it. So the next is eleven point three, resolution number twenty twenty-two dash zero four six dash R to extend workers' compensation coverage to volunteers of the City of Talent and rescinding resolution sixteen dash nine forty-three dash R. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. I will say the title really says it all. As well as the staff report provides more details. Thank you, Tessa, for putting this in front of us all today. Tessa, do you want me to hand the gavel to you to just speak a little bit about what this is for and why it's before council?
Sure. What we're asking is for staff to bring the resolution extending the workers' compensation coverage to volunteers of the City of Talent and rescinding the resolution sixteen dash nine four three dash R. This resolution should be coming forth to the city council on an annual basis. This is something that has been missed for the past, I want to say, five, six years. And we'll be bringing this to you again in the future. Background pursuant to ORS six five six dot zero three one, the City of Talent will provide workers' compensation insurance to the following classes of volunteers and will be noted on the safe payroll schedule. Those volunteers include the police reserves and the public safety volunteers, the planning commission, parks commission, traffic and transportation commission. The City of Talent also maintains a volunteer accident policy that applies to any other volunteer not covered under safe. That coverage extends to the committees such as the budget committee, talent, public art committee, urban forestry committee, harvest festivals committee, et cetera. This was a, having separate policies was a separate risk management decision that was made years ago. And if there are no questions, staff is requesting for approval of resolution twenty-two dash zero four six R extending workers' compensation coverage to the volunteers of the City of Talent and rescinding resolution sixteen dash nine four three dash R. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Tess. And I and I just want to say I just really appreciate the consistent way you're you're helping us. You're looking at our policies and and making things better. I'm I'm a little confused. So according to the ORS, right, this is this is, it looks like it's optional for cities to provide this coverage. And I I just want to make it clear, I really I'm really happy to give our volunteers the coverage. But just reading the report, I started to get confused. Are we covering some people and not other people? And are, is there one form of coverage? Are there two? Are we maintaining two separate forms of coverage? And are, what are the pros and cons? So I just I support the whole thing. I just, I just got confused as to what what we're actually doing.
We are maintaining two separate coverages, and we're, in in this case, having the coverage for the workers' comp just for the police reserves, planning commission, parks commission, and traffic and transportation commission and having a separate policy. If, let's say, for instance, a volunteer got injured, one of those volunteers, it If let's say, for instance, a volunteer got injured, one of those volunteers, it does affect the workers' compensation mod rating. And it could actually increase that and actually cause workers' comp premiums to increase over a period of three years.
For us.
Yes, and as a background, there were other municipalities within the state of Oregon that do not cover or how did I say volunteers? They request them to sign a waiver. So in this case, we're very generous to to do so.
And if I jump in. And so we also have general liability insurance that covers volunteers that don't fall within those categories. So if we were ever to have an event or if one of our gardening club members, you know, hurt themselves while working in on a city project, we do have coverage just at the recommendation of our insurance broker. We just have those two different types of coverage for different scenarios.
Thanks. And I and if I could follow up, that that helps a lot. I'm I'm still not really clear on the pros and cons of the the workers' comp versus the other coverage. I heard what you said that it could, you know, affect future rates, but I I think that's true regardless.
It probably boils down to cost. Because if there is an accident, the the volunteer coverage is probably lesser in price over the over the period of X number of years versus the workers' comp.
But the workers' comp for the volunteer, the workers' comp is better?
It's a completely separate policy. The the volunteers for the police reserves, planning commission, parks commission, and traffic and transportation commission would be along the same insurance as the employees for the City of Talent.
Okay, but that that's so it's improving their coverage.
Right.
If I'm if I'm a police volunteer, I'm happy about this, right? Okay, that's so it's a better it's a better coverage. Okay, cool. Well, I I think this is a direction. It sounds like this is a direction that's providing better coverage for our volunteers. It's, you know, we're being generous towards our volunteers and and we're being responsible as well as financially responsible. So I that's all sounds great to me. So thanks, Tessa.
And you're welcome. And one final note, we have been providing this coverage. This has just been a matter of housekeeping that we have not done over the course of several years. So.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
Which I have a couple of questions about that. So I I looked looking over the old resolution. What is what is is it O R S that we update this every year? I mean, what where where is that in the policy that that this gets updated every? I see it in the new policy, which that's good, but what where did where do we find that the old policy was supposed to be updated every year?
So I can answer that one, Tessa, because I did talk to Kristen about this. So technically, the city buys new insurance every single year. We only have one year policies. So the housekeeping part is, you know, every time we get a new insurance policy, which is on annual basis, you know, we should be renewing this resolution just to line up with that new policy.
I, by the way, I have my camera off because my signal is glitching. So sometimes if you turn your your video off, it stops glitching and it has. So and okay, so that was the one question. And then looking at the old policy, it also the old policy also provided for a wage for voluntary police force. Are we still doing that?
Yes.
So the so the volunteer, the only volunteers in this community that are paid a wage are the are on the police force?
I can answer that one.
Yeah.
So we we don't pay wages to any of our volunteers, but we do have to set a wage estimate for the calculation of workers' compensation insurance coverage.
Is that what they mean by an assumed monthly wage? So it's based off of that. Okay, I got it. It doesn't it but that didn't in the old policy, it doesn't apply to any of the other volunteers. Does it apply to them now? Has that been has that been changed? So that assumed monthly wage, is that being applied to everybody moving forward?
It's to those that those four groups of volunteers that I spoke of. That's what it would be for.
Okay, great. All right. That's what I wanted to find out. And then I guess, you know, because I can see where this slipped through because it wasn't written into the policy and I really appreciate your level of detail, Tessa, and putting it in the policy. When you guys build in an annual policy that needs to be checked, what what kind of how do you guys trigger yourself? Or what is, you know, how do you how do you make sure that it gets done on an annual basis? Like, what is the like, if you weren't here, Tessa, and somebody else was here and they didn't read this policy, how do we make sure it gets done every year?
There's first of all, two things. One, I can't take credit for this. This came from Kristen Wick, our insurance agency agent. Two, we are working on preparing, like in my case, since I'm new to the City of Talent and I'm learning, you know, when things are due, we I have a Gantt chart that that tells me, okay, by the way, you need to be doing this resolution in July of every year. It's just something that it's a setting up a shared Gantt Gantt chart with the rest of staff so that does not get missed.
Oh, my God, that was my next question. Is it a shared? Is it a shared Gantt chart with the rest of staff so that it doesn't get missed? Okay. That's perfect. All right. Thanks. I appreciate that because I, you know, we 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 want to provide oversight, but sometimes the tools and the mechanisms aren't there for us to provide oversight even even when, you know, it's the public expects that. And so knowing that those tools are in place for you all, I mean, that's that's the assurance that we need, right? So I really appreciate your answers, even if it seems trivial in on some level, it's important for us to know and be able to speak intelligently about it. All right. Thanks, everybody. Any other questions on this item? And I'll entertain a motion. Counselor Clark?
I move to approve resolution twenty two dash zero four six dash R extending workers' compensation coverage to volunteers of the City of Talent and rescinding resolution sixteen dash nine four three dash R.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution twenty two dash oh zero four six dash R extending workers' compensation coverage to volunteers of City of Talent and rescinding resolution sixteen dash nine forty three dash R. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Panamara?
Yes.
Counselor Greider?
Yes.
Counselor Prestizo?
Yes.
Counselor Byers?
Yes.
Counselor Paranoid?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you, Hector. All right. So the next item on the agenda. Are we doing all of these resolutions now? This or you're you're going to do a staff report on each one first, right?
I will. I'm just saving the PowerPoint slide space.
Yeah, boy, this is this is what I call efficiency. All right. So the next item on the agenda is eleven point four. Staff report?
Yeah, so this is another housekeeping kind of just formal resolution. It's resolution twenty two dash zero four seven dash R adopting Medford Water Commission Resolution number one eight two nine, which is increasing the system development charges in the City of Talent. So the Medford Water Commission treats and transports our water for us for our community members to use. As part of that treat and transport agreement is that we apply Medford Water Commission S D Cs to new development here in Talent. So the Medford Water Commission has increased their S D Cs. And so this resolution is recognizing that increase and just restating that we will continue to collect S D Cs on behalf of the Medford Water Commission.
Any questions? Counselor Panamara?
And just to be clear, in case folks are curious, Jordan, this doesn't affect people's water bills in any way, only new developments.
Corrects.
Anybody else? Any other? All right, I'll entertain a motion. Counselor Byers?
Yes, I move to adopt resolution twenty two dash zero four seven dash R adopting Medford Water Commission Resolution number one eight two nine, increasing the system development charges of the City of Talent.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Medford Water Commission Resolution number eighteen twenty nine, increasing the system development charges in the City of Talent. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Panamara?
Yes.
Counselor Greider?
Yes.
Counselor Prestizo?
Yes.
Counselor Byers?
Yes.
Counselor Paramore?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you, Hector. All right, item eleven point five is resolution number twenty twenty two dash zero four eight dash R to acknowledge the fiscal year twenty twenty dash twenty twenty one audit staff.
Yes. So just like the resolution title says, I love how they're so self explanatory. We have received the final audit report for the City of Talent for the fiscal year twenty 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 one. This process took a lot longer than typical. That was largely due to the large level of federal grants that we received. Our auditors had to provide additional level of audit to make sure we're using those federal grant funds correctly and appropriately. So the audit results this year, they did come back saying that our financial statements are clear and accurate. This is considered a clean audit that the city has received. There were two categories that we did overspend by just under ten thousand dollars in, which I will say from my side is a very impressive thing given that this was the year that the city responded to the fire when there was a lot of chaos and a lot of money going in and out responding to that emergency. So the resolution before you all is just acknowledging receipt of that audit, which will also be uploaded on our new website on our official audit page in the future.
Great. Are there any questions or comments? In those areas that we overspend in, how is that adjusted?
So typically what happens is, you know, Tess and I would keep a very close eye on the budget. And if we're getting to a point where it looks like we're going to overspend our appropriations, then we would go ahead and come to council to make a budget adjustment before the end of that fiscal year. Since this is, you know, years previously passed, there's not as much action that we could do it, we could potentially do a retroactive. You know, the the liability for the city when we spend beyond our appropriation is that the liability actually falls on the public of public official who is responsible for overseeing the budget. So it would be the city manager, I believe, was a person at the time who was the budget officer. And it's they are civilly or I would be civilly civil, I can't even say the words, but I would be liable for any expenditures over what was appropriated if I did it through willful neglect or if I did it with any intentional act of overspending. So that would then just be an investigation that would have to occur if a complaint was filed against me. Does that help answer kind of what that means?
It may have been not. It was interesting, but it wasn't really. I I I mean, what I'm asking is, what is, you know, how do you how do you account for that? How do you adjust it? And it sounds to me like if I heard you right, once it's passed, you can't do an adjustment after the fact? Or an appropriation after the fact?
Tessa, I'm going to throw that one to you since this one's out of my experience field, but if Tess has no answer, we can follow up with an answer to that question.
All right. So let me let me add. Let me add to the question, Tessa, since you're since you're really, I think what's important is would the audit process expect us to to adjust it after the fact? Yeah, so both of the questions.
I do not know the answer to that question, and that's something that I will research and get back to you before the next council meeting.
And I can share because I did talk to our auditor about this. They do not expect us to correct it. The scale of that overspending was so small that they did not feel the need for that it put at risk our financial statements. But we will follow up with more details for council on what it means if a city does expend beyond their appropriations and the different tools that can be done to fix it and win.
Great. And that the different tool that would be to fix it, but also I think, you know, it just gives us an opportunity to think about how how we can make sure that that doesn't happen as well as, you know, as the elected body. And it's one thing, this is a shout out to you, Tessa, and your reports is that you're starting to report cumulative balances and what's left in the balances in your reports. We haven't seen those in years. And and that just to, you know, for for the rest of the council, that one report is such a powerful tool because it really does measure where we're at in any one category. We it I'm really so, so glad to see that report come back and it does provide us with a level of responsibility as well. So thank you, Tessa, for that. Counselor Panamara?
Yeah, I just wanted to check my, you know, as far as budgeting goes, if we're carrying along during the fiscal year and just like in May, we're like, oh, we spent we got something fancy in parks and we overspent, that would just be a resolution that the council would just move money from here to there. We're taking it out of contingency. In other words, it's it's no big deal if you catch it before the end of the fiscal year. So again, that's that just goes to say thanks for keeping us on track, Tessa.
Good to have you back. Talent stronger with you in it. Okay, so if there's no other questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion. I was going to say I'd be happy to call on somebody. Counselor Panamara?
Giving everyone a chance. I move to approve resolution two two dash zero four eight dash R acknowledging the fiscal year audit for the period ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty one.
Second.
You have a motion and a second acknowledging the fiscal year audit for the period ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty one. Are there any further discussions? All right, seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Panamara?
Yes.
Counselor Greider?
Yeah.
Counselor Prestizo?
Yes.
Counselor Byers?
Yes.
Counselor Paramore?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you, Hector. All right, so that's it for new business. Item number twelve is other business and future agenda items. Anybody? Jordan?
All right. I have two kind of fun items for council to talk about. First off, Rogue Valley Sewer Services currently has a board opening and they've invited a member of Talent City Council, if anyone has interest acting on their board. It would be an appointment that just runs through June twenty twenty three, after which, you know, the person would need to run for reelection if they wanted to maintain their seat. Would anyone here at City Council be interested in that role? And if so, I will connect you with their executive director to better understand what the commitment would be and the role.
Counselor Panamara?
So is this open to anybody or is it open to do you need an elected official?
We need an elected official.
Oh, okay. I I was just going to say if other people are interested, I I think it's fascinating stuff. I was on the I did the budget committee several, well, whenever the fiscal year happened, I guess that was May. And they're interesting subject matter. They're a good group. If somebody's interested, I'd I'd highly recommend it. If nobody else has the bandwidth, I could I could probably do it.
Thank you, Counselor Panamara. If anyone, you know, wants to shoot me an email this weekend, let me know. If not, Namara, I'm going to come knock on your door and connect to you just in case. The second topic that I have for other business is that so ready is hosting a their crown dinner this weekend on September ninth at Margaritaville. And we have two free meals available for a talent elected folks that would like to attend. This is a ten jurisdiction dinner to support business development in the area. Would anyone in council like to have or have capacity to go to a Would anyone in council like to have um, or have capacity to go to a dinner on the ninth, which I believe is Friday?
Yeah, normally that's a dinner that I uh typically, typically go, but I, I'm, um, I'm otherwise engaged with a family matter on that night. So I'm not able to make it. Uh, but, but I don't, uh, I'll be happy to, to do the dinners moving forward if, if the case, if, if the case may be.
Absolutely, and I, and I should clarify too, it would be a free dinner, but a buy your own drinks night, if that, you know, sways anyone differently. Okay, well, if anyone has any interest in the next twenty-four hours, shoot me an email and I'll connect you with Colina, so ready.
Counsel Perry Miller?
Um, Jordan, I'm a maybe. Can you send me the details? Thank you.
Would love to, thanks.
All right, are there any other others? Any other, other business? Counsel uh, Penamriff, I think I saw your hand up earlier.
Yes, um, yeah, so I have another other, and uh, that's the idea of uh. From time to time, this council uh approves uh resolutions that are um. Kind of aspirational in nature and uh supporting um things that show up on, on the ballot or appear before the state legislature. Um, but I'd like to ask the council if it would be okay if I would um draft up a resolution for um staff to review. Uh, that would be in support of the Hope Amendment, which is going to be on the November ballot. It's a, it's a constitutional amendment to um essentially aspirational in nature. Uh, that would make healthcare, um, that would, that would solidify our value that healthcare is a human right. Um, it would, uh, more specifically, it would establish that Oregonians have the right to access cost-effective. Clinically appropriate healthcare, and that it would enshrine um the right to access to healthcare in our state constitution. I think we would be the first uh in, in the nation to do so, although many state constitutions do talk about health. Um, and it's not a tax increase. So I guess I'm asking for uh consensus, uh, if I could um put that on. If we could have that on the next um agenda.
So with that, we would get a staff report um, or just a overview of the item. And um. And then uh it would be on, it would be on the agenda to uh decide whether or not to send a letter or not. Am I understanding that correctly, Counsel Penamriff?
I, I don't know that we need a letter. I think it's just a resolution. If the resolution, yeah, because I think when we did this for like, uh. No L N G, um, it was, once there's a resolution in place, any council member can say, hey, we. The city supports this, or the city's against this because um we've uh, and not just a personal opinion.
Yes, that's right, and thank you for reminding me of that. Um, and do you have the bandwidth for that, Jordan?
Um, I think, and I actually have just been learning about this area, since we do have elections coming up around what staff can or can't do. When it comes to um advocating a specific position on any legislation. Um, for me, the options are, if tonight, if council wants to make a motion that they want to review a resolution of that. I can go ahead and have staff then work on that, once that motion's made. Um, or Counsel Paranor, if you already have thoughts in mind, you are always welcome to bring your own resolution and staff report, and I can then compile it. Um, and have it be a presentation that the Counselor Penamriff presents to the City Council to, to vote on. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does make sense, but what I'm asking um is, I, you know, I agree, I think we, uh, when these things come up. Um, and we're asking um to consider what we would expect would be an objective, like outline of what, of what the um thing is. And um. Yeah, so what I'm, uh, if that were the case, do you have uh the capacity for that, or?
My preference, if, if a counselor is able to go ahead and provide that information, um, that would take a lot of load off my plate. I'm always happy to help edit or draft things um that are in draft form. So capacity is highly limited right now, is what I'm trying to express.
I, I suspected so, and um, and it's important for all of us to know how that would be coming to us, you know. Um, whether or not it was uh developed by a counselor and then edited by the city manager, those are the kinds of things that. Inform us about what we're looking at. So um, that's, I, I am looking for clarification a little bit, uh, just so that we all know. Um, so Counsel Penamriff, if you have your hand up?
Yeah, I, 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 I think I already volunteered to um put a draft together to take, take the load off. I think um the council would appreciate um having our professional staff look at it and say, yeah, this is. Aren't going to get us into any trouble or anything. Um, you know, so uh, that kind of uh seal of approval. That this is a legitimate thing that we can do as council, um, you know, values in po- politics aside. Um, yeah, I'd, I'd be happy to put together a draft for um Jordan to uh review.
Yeah, and I just, like, another clarifying point is I, what I'd be hoping from staff is that they would be looking at it from uh, with an objectivity lens. Just to make sure that what we're presenting uh kind of passes the objectivity sniff test, if you, if you will. So, I mean, I think it's important when we pass these things that we start from a neutral ground. Um, so it really does demonstrate our true values in that way. All right, uh, so is there any objection to bringing this to the agenda? All right, thank you, Counsel Penamriff, for doing the heavy lifting and Jordan for being a support for that, and we'll see it at the next meeting. I have one item. Um, so I heard several opportunities to appoint counselors. One was a C, uh, one is a, uh, R V S S Board. Um, one was to the technical advise, no, to the Steering Committee of um G J C C T L R G. Um, and then there's also one in your staff report uh for the T G M Growth Management. I think that's going to be an important appointment, and I want to make sure that we have an opportunity to make it, if we can, to the C A C, if we're welcome to. Um, so there is a, they're gonna, they're assembling a technical advisory committee and a C A C. And I'm wondering if we're going to be able to appoint to that.
Yeah, let me follow up a question to that with the um. The consultant who's running it, of which is the most appropriate spot to have a focus in.
Uh, great. I mean, I consider us stakeholders, uh, so having, having a representative there. Um, would be, would be great. Having an opportunity to send somebody from talent would be great. Um, and I think that's the only other, those, I didn't, I didn't see any others. So with that, I just think, uh, if we could just um review how we uh appoint. This is a, a little bit like a liaison appointment, I believe. Uh, that's how we've done it historically, but. Um, uh, maybe we can get an email with, once you've determined whether or not C A C is uh. Could include somebody from talent, send an email with those three out to everybody and let us all take a shot at it. And um, and then uh, I, I can tell you that I, I probably am not able to do any of them right now. But um, but would certainly like to be involved with the appointment process. And thanks, if we can get that out to everybody, we can get that going. Um, anything else? Counsel Penamriff?
Yeah, I would just ask as, um, as you're probably going to do anyway, Jordan, is just kind of give an idea of, of how much time. And also from when to when, um, you know, the, the, the time would be needed.
I have one more question. You know, actually, I had, I had a whole list of questions from, on your staff report that I left in my office. I'm not going to try to go through them. I, I remember some, but it's, it's not important right now. But the one, the one thing is, if we can pull the urban renewal planning, um, part of the staff report and put that on the urban renewal page as well. Um, just so that it's on both pages. I know some people are used to going to that page for information. And I just want to make sure that we are doing everything we can to uh make sure that anything about urban renewal is, is demonstrated in both areas. So that if, if anybody is looking, all right. I have, the next item on the agenda is. Um, written communications, there are some letters on file. Um, and. The next item after that is adjournment at nine, at eight fifty-eight. Thank you, everybody. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, all.